Cat? Oh, Christ! Challenge you to duel! I win! Double trouble... Ooh! Nope! Alright... Here we are... Under the cover of night. We're back to our... Original world. Where things look just a little bit more familiar. We're rationing our rum, sipping it as we go. We have food stores aplenty. And horseshoes to... Uh, shod? Think that's the word? One... one horse. Lots of... lots of supplies. We are... Ready... For... for battle. Concentration 2... Maybe I should get that? Wait, we don't have concentration 2? Piss! Next one, next one. We'll do that next. So... let us... Pick up where we, uh... May have fallen last time. We don't want torn breeches. Get that out of here! Brilliant. Yes, this is... this is looking all... Very familiar. Who let this grow back? Cough another life. Mmm. Perfection. Now, we're gonna get revenge in just a moment. Just gonna... pick up a few things. Oh. Apparently, we are too heavy. That's easily fixed. Let's eat our way out of that problem. Now then... In another life, I learned... See you. I see you. Are you rope? Yeah. I... I can't tell. I learned something from my previous life. This way is death. That gets you boxed in. But over here, it looks expansive. We're gonna... we're gonna rush. Get ready... go! Piss! Oh! It is far too cloudy here. Evy! Flamethrower! We are going to die! Oh, excellent! We might actually live through this. I don't wanna use a, uh, a potion if I don't have to. Come on! This rock? Have it! Have... have the wind over your head! What are you? Sandals? Have that too! Damn it! You're far too evasive! You sneaky herder. I see you up there. Doom! Now's not the time for sword debate, Ascalon. It's time to be a duelist! Damn it! Who did you get your Yu-Gi-Oh cards from? Ha! Ah, gross! We have some... we have a solution for that. Brutal violence! So disgusting. Meat! Leaf slime bell? What are you? Quest item: A yellow pearl-like plant with a very hard shell. Oh, is this a part of that quest line too? You're already encumbered. Yeah... yeah, we were looking at the... In another life, we were looking at the blue bora. "A rare mushroom. When picked up, it turns completely blue." Literally, when picked up, it turns completely blue. Like, that is... That is to a T what happened. Bloody blossom. That's bloody blossom... Some kind of British joke here. Ew... gross. Well, now everyone's laden down. Now we need another party member. Just to take the burden off. Are you... Oh, you're just straight up better. Yeah, let's have that. How you doing over there, Ascalon, with your... your sword that you covet so dearly? Accuracy +10. Ding ding ding! I didn't even really look at Ascalon's rapier. Alright, are we... we through here? Nope, torch! Ooh... Ahhh... oh... "And other such sounds of bewilderment and amazement." Yeah, alright, we got a revenge. Let's, um... let's boogie. Uh, we are dragging our feet. My god. You're back! How'd you manage that? Cough, we already know. Spindly bastards. Ooh! Woo! Ah ha! Oh, am I trapped? I am super trapped! Evy! Evy, eh eh... Flamethrower! Go! She is super good at her job. Let's... let's have a rest. Just a little nap on the beach. Wonderful. Oh, piss! I forgot there was a little root here. Oh, right. I forgot that in this life, this world, Ascalon doesn't yet have level 3 of... Of kick-assery. Whatever you wanna call it. Light weapons. Alright, in due time. In... due time. Right, and this opens up the shortcuts. Yes. Excellent. One last thing to do, and I think we're through in this area. I think, right? We'll have a gander at our map when we're done, just to make sure. But I'm pretty certain there isn't anything left, other than... Our Jello friend here. Wait! Don't think I didn't see you. Rock! You are a third companion. Go and do battle! You failed me for the last time, Rock! Hello? Well, we've unleashed yet another horror unto the world. When are we going to learn? Oh, well... Ah ha! Oh, you're back! Is it for revenge? Nope. Gotta wipe that snot off! Come on, come on! Are you in your own poison cloud? Are you not immune to your own poison? Interesting. Bam! Take that! You pile of snot! Ah, jeez. You're probably out of range anyway. That's right. Come back in the range. You know what? Evy, instead of just sitting over there, like... Useless and all, let's put you to work. Yeah. Well, now you're... Useless again, I guess. Ooh, quite a hit! Damn it! Ah ha! Jammed! Yeah, we're getting there. Come on! Finally! Guy puts up a real fight, if you know what I mean. I suspect he do. Okay, um... Well, let's get to town. I've got some goodies to part way with. Um... Some... Alright, we're gonna check our map. Let's do that. Nothing. It's a whole lot of nothing. Well... Ooh, what is going on there? I guess it wasn't entirely nothing. It was certainly... Quite the sight that they were looking at. And there's an herb in the middle. So it's somewhere we're certainly gonna be going. Wow. Oh, yep. Yep. Mm-hmm. It's gonna say... Herb near... near here. Yeah, yeah, that's about right. "Forbidden," you say? Not to me! Not to pirates! Ha 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 ha! I found something else... In the other life. Don't judge me too harsh. "Huge ancient structure stands up against a sky. You wonder what the purpose of it. Evidently, many people were visiting this obelisk, as its surface is worn from handling." Um... And now you know what I know. "Continue six squares north and turn west." I did not know that before. Six squares north, turn west. One, two, three, four, five, six. Uh, so... there, and then where do I go? And then turn west. Alright. Yeah, there is something else here. Maybe it was just... So when I came back, there was a... third, uh... Z-z-zorah... I don't know what they called the... the gross fish people. There was a third one, and it dropped like a... a bangle. A charm. Uh, and it... what? Either that, or there's just one here, and I... Afraid I don't see it. Ah ha! Uh, wha... what do you do? Put that shirt down. Protection +1, strength +1. That is a thing for Ascalon! Put that doublet away. We have no need. Um... We're just gonna put that there... And that there. Now it said "turn west." Nope! Never eat... okay, so I'll turn that way. Did I... did I get that right? Is this not... north? "Continue six squares north and turn west." One, two, three, four, five, six. "Never eat soggy Wheaties." But that point is blocked off! So, one, two... Or maybe he wants me to hear... And so, actually, it's right there! Hmm, uh-huh. Well, let's try that. That would put me here. Okay, alright. No, that's south. That is... that is west. That is certainly Wheaties. Yeah, very impressive. I gotta say, that's... If you were to make a white noise generator, that is what I would want it to sound like. It's a very pleasant noise. I don't know what it wants me to do. Does it maybe mean east? Ha! Oh, oh. Can I beat the stones up? No, no. We're gonna get the stuff to... the stuff I don't want, to buyer, and we're gonna sell it for... Pretty penny. Or two, or three, or 12, or whatever. I'm not picky. And then... Profit. I guess that is the profit, huh? Doublet! Make sale with you, doublet! What? You don't want the doublet? Ugh! Look at how beautiful my doublet is, though. It's... Yes, I already do call you buyer. Oh, piss! That's a machete? Curses. Stop it, buyer! A dagger! A dagger that means nothing to me! Money... And yet, I still feel heavy with supplies. Hmm, what does this quest want me to do? Quest scroll. "Griff needs the following ingredients from the rocky coast: Yellow pearl, green mole jerky, and a blue mushroom." Didn't I pick up mole jerky earlier? Mole jerky. But it needs to specifically be green mole jerky. I don't think we picked up green mole jerky. Hmm, that means it's still out there. Piss! And we're still heavy! Double piss! Well, at the very least, I can clean things up. Compass. Is... is north what I think it is? One second. So here's the thing. If I spend my hard-earned money on... a silver for a compass, uh... and it turns out that north just is up... Like, up on the map, then... That is money not well spent. But if north is like... Off to the right... Or whatever... Piss! Alright, you know what? I'm gonna give it the benefit of the doubt. I'm gonna... Paladin can use his shield to cast flight magic spells. Awesome! I... I'm gonna give it the benefit of the doubt and, um... And see if like... The statue just makes my compass go autopsy turvy? Better have a sip of my tea. Mmm... It has good tea. How did I not notice you before? Okay, so confirmed, that is north. One, two, three, four, five, six. And turn west. And then what? And then what? Pile of garbage? So buyer and I had words. And he decided that... I could give the compass back, and he would give me back my silver. Since it was a pile of garbage and he sold me a lemon. Ain't that right? We reached a compromise. He also has a pointy stick and... money. So... In the end, you can buy two bucks with these... How do I find that these killed? In the end, I have my silver back. That is what matters. I am sad that there is no treasure. Maybe we go through here...? Where is that... stable? I wanna see if my theory is correct. There you are. "Sorry the roads are closed due to ogre attacks. Please come back later." Eh... what? Uh-huh. Oh. Well... shoot. Nope. Rock, you and me. Let us adventure. We haven't seen Arthur in a minute. I'm sure... I'm sure he's around. Oh, are you a door I can go through? Stay guard here, Rock. In case our unsavory folk around. Well, I remember looking in this barrel. I was right here, and there was... A path! Ding! So we must have just leveled up. Starting to feel like we're in oblivion. A Conwell City Council? Well, how... how long is this here? And... Are... is there other places that are open? God, that really kind of... Ah, I can't... I don't know what's there, so... I don't know if I haven't explored it. That too. Hmm. Okay, so there's a ladder. What's in the water? There could be pennies in the water. We like money. Being as that we're pirates. Fish? Oh, we better get out of here. It's gonna hurt. Oh, water in the lungs! Hmm. Mmm, my butt. Hold that thought. Oh, my boobs. Everything hurts for some reason. Probably all the working out I've been doing. Humble brag, hashtag humble brag. Nope, there is no ladder over here. Evacuate, evacuate! Woo! I love how our wizards are just like expert... Swimmers on account of they can hold their breath... Way longer than any fighter could. Now, evacuate! You run faster when you strafe, right? That's just how that works. Okay. Let's, uh... let's have a little picnic on the... bridge. And try not to... Try to cough up all the water that's in your lungs. Perfect. Good. Well done. Excellent, Ascalon. Glowing lights. That... That'll attract my attention. Yeah, okay. Yeah, oh, okay. God, does... does the city council district just get permission to have glowy lights everywhere? No, not you two. Not you two! You're a square I can't go into. You're a square I can't go into. Oh, oh. Uh, are we in danger? Excuse me, gentlemen! Okay. I'm gonna assume because we're in the city that they are upstanding... Gentlemen rat types. Like the shopkeepers I have met. Everyone in a... a building. See, 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 yeah? This is not how you greet someone, man. Everyone I've met in such a way has been on the up and up. "There is a furry rattling, obviously guarding the entrance. Although armed only with knives, something is telling you to watch yourself and not provoke him." "Hey, what is your business here?" His voice is scratchy and harsh. I guess that was scratchy and harsh voice. Um... Yeah, I do kinda wanna get inside, but, uh... uh... Yeah, yeah. Of these, that is the most honest. I just wanna get inside. "Squeak!" Sounds like a laugh. "No, strangers not allowed." "I understand. Maybe some coins can convince you?" "No!" "I understand what you want me to do. That's more like it. See, we're pirates here." "The coins? That's the whole point. And rum. And booty." "I was on an errand near Blue Crystal Inn, but my mission went wrong. As I escaped, I mean, as I walked away from the city guards, I forgot my second side of secret spot. I need to stay here now, but I want my treasure back. It is quite well hidden, but my brothers... Could find it?" "It is quite well hidden, but my brothers could find it." "Well, then, you don't really need me, I guess." "Tell me more." The treasure is hidden inside a sack on one of the ledges around Town Shrine across the Blue Inn. To get there, you will need to use a magic ladder. Here, take this flute. Find the plate with the balance symbol around the shrine and play the flute. That will make the ladder visible, and make sure you perform the operation at night. Oh, okay. Find the balance plate, play the flute, clear. Something else? No, I will be expecting you. Good luck, and do not break your legs. Isn't it supposed to be "break a leg"? Elbow. Okay, maybe not. What if I put that there? Ah ha! We have been gifted a quest. The adventure continues! At night, huh? We don't exactly have a watch, so... Uh, where, where are, where i- where are, where are? Where is the sun? Oh, my ears. Hmm, that was special. Hmm... This is kind of an out-of-the-way spot. Could there be buried treasure? The answer is no. And it could be a possibility. Is that loot? My loot detector's going off. Ah, might be loot. If I was a swarthy pirate, I would put loot under the barrels. And not in them. Dig! Dig, Ascalon! Well, we are not dealing with swarthy pirates, are we? Sorry, you do not have any reason to meet the city council now. Aw, I just want their autograph. Maybe a little one? Guess it's not a good enough reason. Never meet your heroes, they say. What is going on here? This is quite the rough wall for... This. Alright, I'm getting the impression that we've covered most all the bases. Yeah? Yeah? Most all. City Council, some kind of thieves' guild situation. What? According to this, this wall doesn't exist! There. I have improved the map somewhat. At the very least, made it readable. Actually, I don't know that. Okay, so that's, that's like some kind of ladder situation. That wouldn't just be random, would it? Let's, uh, let's go back around. Yeah, it's not going back around. That is also a dead end. We are not skinny enough to get through that, that hole, that two-people-sized hole. We are far too adventurous to take the easy route. No, we have to take the long route. There might be adventure around that corner. And it looks like some kind of garden. You know, with tubes. It's an ancient internet garden. Oh, interesting. Pardon me. Don't mind if I do. Yep. Buyer has told me, save often. And buyer has only steered me wrong like once or twice, or maybe three times. Certainly not enough to get a track record as of yet. Ah, piss, it is getting late. We have a, um, a mission, a purpose to uphold. Good. Excellent. Now I for one am pleased that we have people that never sleep. What is the point of this? What is the point of this? It's like your architects were drunk when they made that. Okay, that was the bridge from the, the Blue Inn. So here's the Blue Inn. Let's read the quest. Quest scroll. You have promised to deliver the treasure back to the guild entrance guard. You need to find a plate with a balance rune somewhere around the shrine and whistle on the flute during the night. The path shall be revealed. Don't get caught! Hmm, hmm, hmm. There you are. Okay, so a, a balance plate. Around the shrine is... That's not a shrine, is it? I mean, maybe. Is that a balance plate? What does a balance plate look like? Are we talking about the rune balance? I, the only reason why I'm stalking around this, cuz here are ledges. That's a, a temple, so potentially a, um... Uh, 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 this could be a shrine? I honestly don't know. Buyer said save often. That... Worked. What was the balance plate? Was the floor a balance plate? I don't know! Did I get it r-? I'm just thankful. Oh. That's normal. Some architect was like, "You know what? We're building everything over here, and we've got these rough stone cubes, but for the sake of symmetry, we're gonna put the corner there." We are good architects. Perfect! Don't change a thing, gentlemen and ladies. Ladies can be architects too. I know a few, and they're ball of people. Nope, alright. Don't break your legs. It's like the guy said. Don't break 'em. Otherwise, he'll break them for you. Again. Cuz they will have already been broken on account of "he said don't break them." That was lucky. Ah. Ah ha! What's in the sack? Moldy cheese and money. Just gonna... And now we can return with our quest well in hand. Completed honorably! Put that away before someone sees it with you. Sees you with it. Either way, functionally, that statement works.